Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this our fifth and final series in this town hall meeting. And it's such a joy to have you all here with us this evening. I welcome you on behalf of the Sanneville Church. And thank you for being here with us over the past month as we seek to empower people in their health, in their finances, in their relationships with each other. And this evening, our focus is on the matter of prayer. And as a church and as a nation, as a country, if there's ever time that we need to understand the value of prayer, that time is now. And so I welcome you here this evening, and our team welcomes you. And as we begin, I want to do so with a word of prayer. So we're going to invite you to bow your heads as we pray. Gracious Father, we thank you this evening for your blessings. We recognize that our help always comes from you. And if there's a time that we, as a people, as your creation, need to talk to you, that time is now. And so tonight, we look forward to understanding the gift of prayer as individuals in our own lives, as we meander through the COVID-19 pandemic, through our spiritual challenges, as we look at the challenges that face us as families and financially. There are so many people, Lord, that are having financial challenges, a loss of job, and all the rest of it. And so we look to the hills from whence cometh our help. Our help cometh from the Lord, who made the heaven and earth. So bless us now in our understanding of your word tonight, and grant us success. We would see Jesus. And may hearts be, Lord, warmed. And may we apply the principles that we will learn in a very special way, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Tonight, our host is Sister Debbie Zonicle. And so this time, I'm going to turn it over to her. Welcome, Debbie. And good to have you here as a part of our prayer ministry of the church. As you, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Pastor Scavella. It's my pleasure to be here this evening and an absolute pleasure to welcome a special speaker for this evening, Sister Joan Ramming. And Sister Joan is a member of the Hillview Seventh-day Adventist Church. She's a young, single mother, having been widowed some years ago. And she has two lovely, sweet young ladies, her daughters Tyler and Madison. And Sister Joan has been in the banking industry for a number of years. And from what I've observed of Sister Joan, she's an extremely humble woman of God, a woman who believes in prayer, a woman who has a deep, abiding faith in God. And I can tell you that, I think it was maybe about two, nearly three weeks ago, that I had the privilege of listening to a message done by Sister Joan that was shared by our pastor on the church website. I actually took the time to watch it and was very happy that I did. She actually spoke about when you pray. That was her topic. And I can tell you, it was a very simple, yet powerful, thought-provoking message that really unpractical. And it made me look at my prayer life, not just a second time, but a third time, too, to really examine my prayer life and my walk with God. So I want to thank Sister Joan for that. And I also want to thank her for her willingness to share with us this evening. And I'm sure that we're in for a special blessing with the message that God has laid on her heart. So Sister Joan, we welcome you with prayerful hearts and open minds, ready to receive what God has prepared for us through you this evening. Thank you, Sister Joan.
Amen.
Right, go ahead? Okay. Good evening, everyone. And, you know, Zooming is a little different because the interaction is a little different from seeing you in person. But it is a humble privilege to be with you tonight. And I trust that something that I say will help you to enrich your prayer life. When Pastor Scavalla called me, he said, "I'm the ram cord and the thicket." And the topic is praying powerful prayers that move the hand of God. And so I must put in my disclaimer right here. Romans 8:28 tells us that we don't even know what to pray for as we ought, but the Spirit helps us. And so I don't think any one of us has the monopoly on prayer. That is the prerogative of the Spirit. And He helps us to develop that prayer life, each one of us. So let's just bow our heads for a word of prayer as we go into the brief thoughts tonight. Father, I just thank you for the gift of prayer and for the privilege of prayer. And as we discuss this topic tonight, I pray that your Holy Spirit will speak through me and speak to me and to all of our listeners, and that we will get the message that you have for us tonight. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Okay, like Sister Debbie said, for those of you who know me, know that I have been around prayer ministry and in prayer ministry for many years. And over the last few years, I kind of took a step back, for those of you who know, from the public prayer ministry. But for some reason, I can't get away from it. And this year, you know, I had said to God, you know, "I am open to whatever you want me to do. I know you've given me certain gifts. I know one of them is teaching." And I said that, you know, "Whatever you would have me to do, I will do." And so Debbie spoke about me speaking a few weeks ago, and that came out of left field for me because I got the call, but I was like, "Okay, God, I'm going to do it." And then when Pastor Scavalla called me this week, I was like, "Okay, I made this promise. And so if you call, I will speak." So my topic, praying powerful prayers that move the hand of God. And I'm piggybacking off of the last talk or sermon that I gave. And for those of you who didn't hear it, you can go on and listen to it. But I'm going to break it down into two, okay? For me, there are two prayers that move the hand of God. And the first prayer that moves the hand of God is a personal prayer for salvation, to know God. So for me, the first powerful prayer that moves the hand of God is a personal prayer for salvation, to know God. When any human being cries out to God and says, "Lord, save me," that causes God to move immediately. And why does it cause God to move immediately? Because 2 Peter, and if you have your Bibles, you can turn to it, or you can jot down the references. 2 Peter 3 verse 9 says that, "God is not willing that any should perish, but that all should come to repentance." So whenever somebody says, "Lord, save me," that's according to his will, and that's a prayer he answers instantly. I think of several examples of this in the Bible. And I hope you're familiar with these stories. There are three of them that I want to point out this evening. The Thief on the Cross. And that reference is Luke 23, verse 42 to 43. Luke 23, 42 to 43. And the thief on the cross hadn't been walking with Jesus. He was an open sinner, convicted sinner by current standards. And he just cried out to Christ on the cross and said, "Lord, remember me when you come." And immediately, Christ was moved to extend to him the answer to his prayer instantly. He said, "Today, I tell you, you will be with me in paradise." So never walked with God, never was in communion with Christ. But at that first encounter, he made that cry, and that prayer was instantly answered. And then the second example is Peter drowning. I'm sure you remember the story. He saw Jesus walking on the water, and he said, "And if it's you, tell me to come." And then he looked around and saw the waves and started to sink. And he cried out, "Lord, save me." That reference is Matthew 14:30 to 31. Matthew 14:30 to 31. And the Scripture says, "Immediately, Jesus took him by the hand and saved him." That was a prayer that instantly moved the hand of God. And then the last example I'm going to give is the publican in the temple. The parable is found in Luke chapter 18, and the part about the publican is verses 13 and 14, where the publican went up to the temple. And the Bible says, "He would not so much as lift up his eyes in the place because he felt so sinful." And everybody else around him felt sinful. As a matter of fact, someone else was standing in the same place, saying how they were so glad that they were not like him. And Jesus said that he went down to his house. That means immediately, when he said, "Lord, have mercy on me," a sinner, immediately, God was moved to answer that prayer. And he left and went down to his house justified. So what do these things tell me? It doesn't matter what category you find yourself in. Don't let anybody tell you that you cannot cry out to God to save you. Do not let anyone tell you that your situation is too hopeless for you to cry out to God. Whether you have never known Him, never encountered Him, and you encounter Him for the first time, you can make that cry. Whether you have been in the church, like Peter, walking with Jesus, and you come upon some difficulty, waves boisterous, you can call out to Him. Or if you are outcast in the church, people look at you when you come in, and they think and figure they know what all you have done, how bad you have been, what sins you have committed. Don't pay them any mind. You are in a position to pray one of the most powerful prayers that will move the hand of God, and that is, "Lord, save me. Lord, be merciful to me, a sinner." And immediately, His air will be open to that prayer, and He will move. And so that's the first prayer. In connection with that prayer, powerful prayers, the prayers of intercession on behalf of others for salvation. Now, when we pray for the salvation of others, it may not be as instantaneous as if you yourself pray. And this is because God is a God of love, and He has given us freedom of choice. And so I am praying for my brother, that he will be saved. God continues to work with him until he makes that choice, but it is His choice to make. And so sometimes we may get discouraged because we don't see an instantaneous response to "God, save my brother." But God is working through our prayers to reach my brother. And it may take a little longer, but hold on, because this is as well the will of God. 1 Timothy 2, verse 1, and 3, and 4. 1 Timothy 2, verse 1, and 3, and 4 says, "I exhort therefore, that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty. For this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior, who will have all men," and that's mankind, "to be saved and to come unto the knowledge of the truth." And so this is a prayer that Christ Himself, in His word, is telling us to pray. And later on, I'll give you the reference for what happens when we pray according to His will. And so this first prayer is a powerful prayer that moves the hand of God, is the prayer for salvation, that is, to know God. And then the second prayer that moves the hands of God is the prayer of the righteous, those who know God. So first prayer is, "I want to know you, God." The second prayer is the prayer of the righteous who know God. Now, this may be, you know, seem like a little irony, because Romans 3, verse 10 says, "As it is written, there is none righteous, no, not one." And then 1 Peter 3, verse 12, I hope you're writing down the references so you can refer to them later. 1 Peter 3, verse 12 says, "For the eyes of the Lord are over the righteous, and His airs are open unto their prayers." And then James 5, verse 16 says, "That the effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man availeth much." So this sounds like a little of a conundrum. There is none righteous, but the Lord hears the prayers of the righteous. And the effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man availeth much. So how do I reach to righteous? So when you have some time, finish read Romans 3, verse 10. That talks about, from verses 22 to 26, how that righteousness is obtained through faith in Christ, through that relationship. So once you have prayed that first powerful prayer, and you have moved into a relationship with Christ, you now qualify to pray. Powerful prayers of those who know God. And I just want to say that, you know, I'm not going to give you a script or a magic bullet, because prayer is not some magic bullet or formula or a heavenly vending machine that we go to. And, you know, if I ask this way, then this will drop out of the box. Or if I press this button, that'll happen. No. Prayer is about relationship. All right? So from to know God to knowing God. So how do I get to that point? I have a relationship of love and trust with God, because people have different kinds of relationships with God. They have, you know, we have all kinds of dysfunctional relationships today. And sometimes we try to apply those to our relationship with God. And so some people serve God out of fear. Some people, you know, I really am a little skeptical about whether or not you are there, you're going to hear me, or whatever it is. But God wants us to develop a relationship of love and trust with Him. Why? Because, one, He is love. That's 1 John 4, verse 8. 1 John 4, verse 8 says, "He that loveth not, knoweth not God; for God is love." And if you don't know what love looks like, read 1 Corinthians 13, which is unconditional love. And then that love is also sacrificial. So you can read about that in Matthew chapters 26 to 28, how much Christ sacrificed for us. That's the kind of love that He has, a kind of love that He is willing to lay down His life for you. If you knew somebody who you knew would do anything for you, would lay down their life for you, would you have, would love you unconditionally, no matter what? Would you have any issue with approaching them for a request? No. Because you have this relationship with someone who loves you unconditionally, someone who not only is willing to lay down their life for you, but who has laid down their life for you. And the condition is that you have faith and trust in this person. That's Hebrews 11, verse 6, which says, "But without faith it is impossible to please him; for he that cometh to God must believe that he is, and that he is a rewarder of them that diligently seek it." So I am wanting to develop a love and trust relationship with God. And when I have developed this relationship, I'll give you some practical steps at the end, then I am known as a friend, or child, or son, or daughter of God. When you know someone, and I give, I'll give an example. When my children were growing up, I feel kind of old now, say that when they were growing up, like they're not grown. But when they were growing up, I had a rule. And the rule was, you are not sleeping over at anybody's house, except for your grandparents in South Andrews, basically. Or, you know, I am off the island for work, and I have to have you sleep by someone. That's it. So, you know, today, sleepover parties are popular and all of that. And that was always my rule. And so, you know, it got to a point where if someone invited them to a sleepover party, they didn't even bother to ask me, because they knew that was not my will, and that the answer would be no. Similarly, when I become a friend, a child, a son, a daughter of God, in a loving, trusting relationship with Him, where I know Him, there are certain things I am not even going to ask Him for, because I know, I already know the answer. And I already know what His will is. So then there is this promise in 1 John 5, 14 and 15. This is one of my favorite texts. It says, "And this is the confidence that we have in Him, that if we ask anything according to His will, He hears us. And if we know that He hears us whatsoever we ask," that comes after the first part, "we ask according to His will, and we know He hears us. And if we know that He hears us whatsoever we ask, we know that we have the petitions that we desired of Him," which is amazing and beautiful. So when I say, "God, I want to know you more," and I had to smile, because in coming on this evening, I looked back at something I had just written this weekend, and I had just put on the paper that, you know, "God, I want you. I just want you all up in my life." And then I get this call from Pastor Scavalla. And I said, "Okay, God, I hear you. You're answering this prayer because you want to be all up in my life, too. That's your will." All right? So whenever we ask according to His will, we know. And sometimes we ask, you know, and we forget. So it's good sometimes to write down what you ask for. Another example was, I was reading something in Galatians, and it was talking about bearing one another's burdens. And, you know, some of my prayers are just thought, like, "God, what does that mean? Bear one another's burdens?" And I went downstairs, and, you know, there's a pastor I normally listen to, and I just put on his sermon, and one sermon finished, and the other one started to play. And it was on the exact text I had just read that morning, a whole sermon on that one text I had read, where I said in my mind, "God, what does it mean to bear one another's burden?" And so when we ask according to His will, God moves instantly at times. Powerful prayers that move the hand of God. How do I get to know His will? Time invested, time talking with God, time listening to God, and sacrificing. So remember I said prayer is not a magic bullet. Prayer is about relationship. And a relationship is a two-way street, not a one-way street. You ever been in a relationship where you are the person doing all the giving, and the other person is just doing the taking? Or you're doing 90%, 80%, and they are doing 10%, 20%? How does that make you feel? Used to wear it. And then you get tired. That's not a real relationship. In a real relationship, you are both engaged and giving fully. John ten, verse twenty-seven to thirty. You can use that as a reference, so this is a two-way street. Jesus is here saying in verse twenty-seven, two things, my sheep hear my voice, so they're listening to me. And then further, I know them, so I'm paying attention to them. And then they follow me. So, I'm talking to them, and they're responding to me. Why? Because verse eleven of the same chapter says, "I am the good shepherd. The good shepherd gives His life for the sheep." Remember, I spoke earlier about not having any hesitation, because now we know who God is. We know what He is like. He loves us unconditionally. God is love. In Him, there's no darkness at all. So, we can follow Him. And so, in this relationship, we need to cultivate hearing the voice of God. And that comes from spending time with Him, listening to Him out of His Word, and then talking to Him and allowing Him to talk back to you. John fifteen, verse seven, another one of my favorite verses, says, "If ye abide in Me," this is Jesus talking. And abide denotes someplace that you live, your abode, your dwelling place, where you spend a whole lot of your time. If you abide in Me, and My words abide in you, My words reside in you, you shall ask what you will, and it shall be done unto you. And so, when it comes to knowing God in another place, I don't have the reference. But Christ says, if anyone wants to know the will of God, he can know what the will of God is, right? We don't have to be doubting as to what His will is. He has given us His Word. And then, the more we spend time with Him, He will actually speak to us. Sometimes it may be an impression to do something. Sometimes it may be through someone else. And sometimes it may be directly from His Word. But He will speak, and sometimes it's directly telling you what to do. So, like Jacob in Genesis thirty-two, twenty-six, I want us to make a resolution to say, "Like Jacob, when I realize that I am having an encounter with God, to say, 'I will not let you go, except you bless me, until you, until I know you hear me, and until I hear from you.'" And this is the kind of relationship that Jesus had with His Father when He was here on earth, in John eleven, forty-one, and forty-two, and then John eight, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. So, eleven, forty-one, and forty-two, this was at the grave of Lazarus. Jesus is praying, and He says, "Father, I thank Thee that Thou hast heard me, and I knew that Thou hearest me always." Wouldn't you like to have that testimony? I'm striving to hear, to, to have that testimony, that I know that God always hears me, and that He has heard me when I pray. And then, why was Jesus always heard? John eight, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. He says, "For I do nothing of myself. I do always those things that please Him." And so, we want to stay in relationship with God until we know His will. We can say, "I hear You, You hear me. I thank You that You always hear me. I do nothing of myself. I do always those things that pleased You." And because we spend so much time with Him, we will begin to look, act, speak, talk, walk, be like Him. We'll be walking in His will. So, back to, um, prayer is not a magic bullet. It's about relationship. Psalms thirty-four, four, and five says, "Delight yourself also in the Lord." When you delight yourself in something, you engage in it. So, engage in relationship with the Lord, which is when you know God is in, when you know God, right? Then you ask, and your desires are in line with His will. It says, "Commit thy way unto the Lord. Trust also in Him, and He shall bring it to pass." So, this is one of the first, um, action points. Tell God what you want. So, I'll just give them to you. I heard them in these four questions from a pastor, Eric Thomas. It says, the four questions was, "What do you want? What are you willing to sacrifice? What does the Word say, and what are you grateful for?" So, find a quiet place, or if you have a place that you normally do your devotion. You write out what you want. This is relationship now. So, talk to God about your actual life, all right? Oh, Lord, bless the world. Bless my family. Listen, God is blessing us every day. The Bible says, "He sends His rain on the just and on the unjust." So, when we just speak in generalities, that's like me seeing Elorah Jo and saying, "How you doing? Fine." He say, "How you do? Fine." None of us know how each other's doing. That's it. That's the extent of our communication. And that's how we treat God a lot of times. "Hi, how you doing? Bless me today, protect me today." I mean, God is doing that every day of our lives. And so, we don't acknowledge it, because it's nothing specific. He is doing it for everybody around us. And so, we feel as if, when we pray, nothing happens, because those prayers are not born out of, they're, they're like rituals. They're like, they're like, uh, in my, in my last talk I gave, like, some of us repeating the Lord's Prayer after we have already prayed, as a ritual. So, the prayers ended, and we all repeat the Lord's Prayer, but we just prayed. So, what are we repeating the Lord's Prayer again for? What does that add to what we are saying to God? Is it just words we're, we're sending out, right? So, the first thing is, talk to God about your actual life. What do you want? Write it down on paper. "God, this is where I am. This is where I would like to be. Help me with this. Help me with that." You know, I have one on my, "Help me get rid of these loans, or these debts that I have. Help me, um, get some repairs done on my home." Different stuff like that, all right? "Help me," and then, and of course, I have there, "God, I want You, I want to know You." And I want, but tell Him what you want. Tell Him what you want your relationship with Him to look like, specifically, to be like. So, talk to God about what you want. And then, like I said, it's a two-way street. This isn't the Santa Claus or the vending machine. So, yes, you have told God what you want. Now, you need to ask God, "What does He want from you?" And that could be kinda scary, you know? But it shouldn't be scary, because what? God is love. God's love is unconditional. God is willing to lay down His life for us. And there are so many promises that says, "No good thing will He withhold from them that walk uprightly." So, ask God, "What is it that He wants you to do for Him?" He may say, "You need to forgive that sister. You need to forgive that brother. You need to stop being on the internet so many hours a day. Spend some more time with me." All right, things like that. Then, what does the Word say? There are thousands of promises in the Bible. Start learning them. So, when you buck up on a situation, you know what God says. And because you know what His Word says, then you know what His will is in that situation. So, begin to commit those to memory. And then, what are you grateful for? The Bible always admonishes us to, along with our prayers, give thanks. That's Philippians four, verse six. It says, "Be careful or anxious for nothing, but in everything, by prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, let your requests be made known unto God." And so, don't ever forget to give thanks. So, when we commit our way to the Lord, as in Psalm thirty-seven, He says, "When we trust in Him, He will bring it to pass." So, that's telling God what you want. Then God says, "For I know the plans I have for you," Jeremiah twenty-nine, eleven, into thirteen. "I know the plans I have for you." So, we need to ask God, "God, what would you have me to do? What is Your plan for me?" And, um, like Pastor Pavel Goya, who was here for the prayer conference, he, um, has a saying that he tells his congregants when he tells them to pray about something, and they said, "Well, I'm not getting an answer." He says, "Well, don't move until God gives you the answer." So, if you say, "God, what do you want me to do?" Now, God, we know that God has something for us to do, right? He says here, "I know the plans I have for you." And so, this is a prayer that we can pray and expect an answer to. "Lord, what are Your plans for me? Reveal them to me," all right? And so, once we have done that, that is the, "What are we willing to sacrifice? What does the Word of God say?", then we give thanks. Another promise is Matthew six, thirty-one, thirty-three. It says, "But seek ye first the kingdom of God and His righteousness, and all these things shall be added unto you." Relationship. So, I'm in relationship with God. I'm talking to God about my actual life, about the things and the desires of my heart. And He is talking to me about His actual plans for my life. So, in wrapping up, I'll just summarize again. Praying, powerful prayers that move the hand of God for me falls into two categories. The prayer for salvation, to know God. When I say, "Lord, save me," God instantly answers. And the prayers of the righteous who have come to trust and know God, those prayers move the hand of God, because I know Him, and I am asking in accordance with the will of the one I know, and I love, and I trust. And so, this evening, I would like all of us, including me, because whenever I prepare these, it's like the Holy Spirit talking to me, to renew our decision. Or if you have never made a decision to know God, to renew, or to make the first-time decision tonight, to say, "God, I want to know You." Because John seventeen, in verse three, says that "this is life eternal, that they might know Thee," that we may know God. It's not life eternal that I join this particular church, or that I give so much of my money to some charity. Life eternal is that I have a relationship with God. When Christ comes, there is a passage that talks about a lot of people who are busy doing a lot of things, but they never knew God. They never took the time to develop the relationship, and they will hear the words, "Depart from Me. I never knew You." We do not wanna be in that position. So, while we are praying, we wanna make sure that we are praying from a place of relationship with God, and not from any other place. A relationship, a loving, trusting relationship with God. "That I might know Thee, the only true God, and Jesus Christ whom Thou hast sent." God, I want to have a relationship with You. And so, what I want to say every day is, "Father, is there anything I can do for you today?" And hear Him saying to me, "My child, is there anything I can do for you today?" Don't you have, I mean, I'm looking at the screen. I'm not sure who, or we have online. But those of you who have children, I'm sure you've asked that question. You're going out, "Is there anything I can get you from the store? Is there anything I can do for you?" Well, this is the kind of relationship we wanna have with God, where we know Him. "Father, is there anything I can do for you?" And have Him say, "My child, is there anything I can do for you today?" So, it's reciprocal. These are the prayers that move the hand of God. And I promise you that if you commit to the time, if you sit down and listen to God, tell Him the desires of your heart, and then you open yourself and say, "God, what would you have me to do?" Write them down, so you don't, so you don't forget them. Maybe you may forget them, but when you go back and you look and see what God has done in your life, it will blow your mind. And so, I just wanna thank you, just wanna say a word of prayer in closing. Father God, we just thank You again for the privilege of prayer. We ask that You would forgive us for the many times that we have treated You as an acquaintance, or as a Santa Claus or vending machine. We ask anew tonight, God, that You would come into our lives and to our midst, that You will reveal Yourself to us, and that we will get to know You personally in a loving, trusting relationship, so that when we ask according to Your will, we can have confidence that You hear us, and that we will receive the things that we have asked, because that is Your plan for us as well. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. I am done turning back over to you, Pastor.
I think Sister, Sister Abby, are you gonna lead out in this section, read questions? While she's thinking about that, somebody was asking for texts you gave in Matthew. I didn't write, write it down.
Six and thirty-three.
Matthew six and thirty-three?
Yes.
Okay. Seek ye first the kingdom of God?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, I think Aleah, I put that in the chat. So, Aleah, if you're listening, Matthew six and thirty-three, Aleah Nelson. Yeah. Okay.
All right, Pastor, we're actually gonna turn this segment over to Elder Roger Ruhl and Allison Ruhl for the segment. If there are any questions, they're going to leave that section. It'll be to Elder Roger.
Okay.
Well, first of all, we want to thank Sister Joan for a, uh, powerful, wonderful teaching on how to, prayers that move the hand of God. And I want to share a personal testimony, 'cause she is so right. When I didn't know God, and... When I didn't know God and I was totally frustrated, I got into a lot of problems and I could not see any way out. And I got so frustrated one day that I was angry with someone who was playing volleyball and he was on the other side and he was cheating. And I felt like I wanted to kill him. And that bothered me because I'd never felt that way before. So I stepped off the volleyball court and I looked up in the sky and I said, Lord, help me. And that's where it started. Everything changed. So he's just waiting for you to ask for his help. And as she said, he moves instantly.
Instantly, yeah.
So we'd like, we, any questions you can put in the chat, Pastor? I don't know if you see anything on your Facebook page of any questions that we, that would be asking from the persons who've been watching?
That was the only one that I saw so far from, I'm not sure about Facebook Live.
And also if anyone wants to, just raise your hand and we'll, we'll, ask Sister Joan to cover whatever question.
Sister Joan, let me ask you, I've always known you to be, especially in the last fifteen or twenty. Um, how should every Christian look at this matter of prayer? Is prayer reserved just for some people, others? What, 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 how do you, how do you relate to that? And how is it to the Christian's life?
I'm glad you asked that question and, I don't want to go into the full thing, but this is a burden on, on my heart when it comes to prayer. That a lot of people are intimidated by prayer or intimidated to pray. And so they feel as if they need to go through another human person. Like I would have a lot of persons come to me and they would say, could you pray for me for this? Because I know when you pray, something's going to happen. Or I know God is going to hear you. Listen, prayer is about relationship. One of my favorite authors, Ellen White, in the book Steps to Christ, talks about, and in the compilation on the book on prayer, talks about how prayer is the breath of the soul. And so as a Christian, if I am not praying, it's like I am not breathing. It is as if I am dead. I have no life. I am oxygen deprived. Um, the power of the enemy encircle those who neglect to pray. Prayer is that important because it connects you to God, the source of all power. Jesus in John 15. Let me find a reference. John 15, verse five, says, without me you can do nothing. Nothing. So if I am not talking to God, my doing is amounting to nothing. Prayer is not reserved for a select few. And, um, that's something else that I struggle with. And I'm sure those of you who have been in prayer ministry would understand how sometimes they ask you over and over and over and over to pray as if there aren't 300 other people in the congregation who profess to have a relationship with God. And so I think we need to get to this point where we understand that prayer is not for show. And that was what my earlier talk was about. Prayer is not for show. Read, when you go home, read Matthew, chapter six, verses five to 15. That gives us the mechanics. Prayer is not for show. Prayer is not a competition. Just because I may speak better English than you doesn't mean that my prayer will reach to heaven faster. Uh, the first text that I read in Romans eight talk about how we don't know how to pray as we ought, but the Spirit helps us. And if you don't know how to pray or feel as if you can't pray, that's Sam, Lord, help me prayer. Start with that. Lord, teach me how to pray. Help me pray. Help me know what to say. Let your spirit impress me what to say, what to ask for. Because of ourselves, we don't even know what to ask for. But the more time we spend talking to God and listening to him out of his word, we will begin to increase and develop our prayer life. Um, it's just like any other muscle in the body. If you don't use it, you lose it. And so there are persons who have developed the habit of prayer and it comes naturally to them because they're always talking to God and they can talk to him at the drop of a hat. That's where we all should strive to be, like Enoch who walked with God daily and talked with God. Um, that's the thing. So I want to dispel that myth. No, it's not for any specific group. It is for every single person who has given their life to Christ and any person who wishes or desires to know God. Prayer is vitally important. I don't know if some of you on the line want to add anything to that. Roger or Allison?
Okay, Pastor, I'm not seeing any other questions. So perhaps we do have Elder David Knowles prepared to give a general prayer. And so we can go to him now, Elder David Knowles.
Okay. Let us pray. Dear God, our love and heavenly Father, we're so thankful that you are a God who hears and answers prayers. And even though sometimes we feel so deficient, sometimes we feel like we are not even worthy to call your name. Sometimes we are so depressed about the situations around us, the world today and our families and all sorts of situations. Deep depression. And sometimes we feel just simply not worthy. But dear God, what a wonderful God who understands, who can read our hearts and our thoughts. You want to save us. So even in our worst despair, you're willing to enlighten us, to give us that confidence that salvation is still through Jesus Christ, that there is still hope for the depressed, for those who are going through many struggles, those who don't know where the next meal is coming from, what are we going to do about the economy of our country, our houses, school fees? If we're so, we're set with so many problems, sometimes we feel overwhelmed. And sometimes we don't even know what to pray for, but we thank you for the Holy Spirit who understands our hearts and who interprets it, even when we just groan in our agony or depression. What a wonderful God you are. So God, all of us have our concerns. We have our needs and you know that. But this hour, we want to present the crusade that begins on Sabbath. Dear God, you already know those who would be saved and who has a desire to get to know you more. And we ask, we proclaim to know you. Sometimes we are not sure that we do. But I pray that your Holy Spirit work on all of us, that we be active in inviting people to these meetings. But we first need to have that kind of relationship with you because we cannot tell people about a good and wonderful God if we don't know that God. So we pray for the presenter, for the evangelist, Pastor Paul. We pray for the entire staff, the entire leadership of our church. We pray for those who cannot support because of old age or sickness or disabilities, but you know their hearts, dear Lord. And your spirit is willing to work with all of us. So free us to be vessels used in your service. We thank you for the inspiration given by Sister Joan. Continue to bless her and her family. Continue to provide for her. You've heard her request for bills and all sorts of things that she may have petitioned to you for, like we have. But give us the faith to trust you and believe you, but more importantly, to know you and to have a closer relationship with you. Bless us as we come to you this journey by faith. Strengthen us, encourage us, save us, and Jesus may we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ellen Knowles, and thank you prayer ministry team. Thank you, Joan, for sharing with us and allowing you yourself to follow your promise and commitment to the Lord. And we pray that God will continue to bless you and to blossom your life and the gifts that he has given you for ministry. And know that we here at this town hall meeting, blessed for you being here with us. Those of you who are visiting, please feel free to register. The registration link is there. We still have a few more masks that we are willing to give away. And we're just happy that you are here with us. We begin our Path to Life in the Box series this coming Saturday morning at 11:00 a.m. We will send the link out. We'll be talking about lessons from the book of Genesis and what God said. God wants to engage us in a communication relay. He wants to say some things to us and he doesn't mind us saying things back to him. And we will be praying, we will have prayer folk available to pray. And the lessons will be exciting. The music will be great and the special features will be abundant. So please join in with us. I have a little video promotion I want to share with you right now before we close. So that's this coming Saturday morning at 11 o'clock. We begin Sundays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Fridays, and then Saturday again. Just pay attention for a minute for this video this time.
Live from the Centerville Seventh Day Adventist Church in sunny Nassau, Bahamas, we present the Path to Life in the Box discoveries. Join us on Zoom, YouTube, Facebook, and follow us on Twitter and Instagram. Allow God's healing power to reach you wherever you are.
Your life.
Your growth continues here.
Okay. So we look forward to seeing you. And that's our intro each evening. And we look forward to not only you coming, but tell somebody, we're going to discover things, both old and new, in the book of Genesis. And so please join us and we look forward to having a wonderful time. Listen, we are going through a difficult time in this world. And the closer we are to God, the better we'll be in getting through the challenges. Because God will never leave us nor will he forsake us. If he could take the children through the desert of Sinai and bring them from Egypt to Canaan safely with all of the challenges that they had, he can carry us through. So I want you to stick with us. And we need to get together. We need to stay together. We need to encourage one another as we make it through this pandemic. God is able to keep us through. So see you on Friday evening. We will have our worship. And then we will also be on Saturday morning as we launch the Path to Life in the Box series. So we look forward to you being there. And bring your friend, encourage somebody to be there with you. So God bless you. It's been a joy in these town hall meetings. Let us know if you like them. We can do some more of them for you later on. Let's keep together and may God bless you richly. May he provide for you and may you find him a comfort in the time of trouble. Good evening and God bless.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, those on Facebook for joining with us.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you, Sister Joan. Blessings.
Blessings. See you too.
Thank you.